To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I take a picture? Can we take a picture? If I can get my phone working. Here we go. Perfect. Thank you. Great job tonight. Thank you so much.
Great job.
Great job.
Okay, next item is approval of minutes. We have one school committee meeting minutes from January 9, 2018.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Further motion for approval by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. On the motion, Mrs. Dunn.
There's one, whoops, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I noticed one correction in the voting order. This would be page three, the drawing of seats. And that just needs to be corrected. And then, there was one other one. Nope, I think it's all set. That's it.
So with that one correction, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of bills. We have warrant A, number 4060. Mr. Olimpio?
I'd like to make a motion to approval of warrant A, number 4060, in the amount of $68,670.03, subject to audit.
Second.
Great. Further motion by Mr. Olimpio for approval of warrant B, number 4061, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of warrant B, number 4061, in the amount of $3,076,203.61, subject to audit.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Further motion by Mr. Olimpio for approval of warrant B, number 4061, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of bills. We have warrant A, number 4060. Mr. Olimpio?
I'd like to make a motion to approval of warrant A, number 4060, in the amount of $68,670.03, subject to audit.
Second.
Great. Further motion by Mr. Olimpio for approval of warrant B, number 4061, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Arnotis?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn? Yes.
Thank you. Next item is approval of bills. We have warrant A, number 4060. Mr. Olimpio?
I'd like to make a motion to approval of warrant A, number 4060, in the amount of $68,670.03, subject to audit.
Second.
Great. Further motion by Mr. Olimpio for approval of warrant B, number 4061, seconded by Mrs. Dunn. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of warrant B, number 4061, in the amount of $3,076,203.61, subject to audit.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Further motion by Mr. Olimpio for approval of warrant B, number 4061, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of warrant B, number 4061, in the amount of $3,076,203.61, subject to audit.
Second.
Great. Thank you. Further motion by Mr. Olimpio for approval of warrant B, number 4061, seconded by Mr. Arnotis. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Great. Thank you. And I'd like to step aside. My daughter is in a concert downstairs in the auditorium that I'd like to go and attend, and I wanted to ask our vice chairman, Mr. Arnotis, to sit in and move forward with the meeting. Thank you, Mr. Arnotis.
Thank you.
I should be back. Thanks, buddy.
Continued business.
MSBA Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Arnotis. I actually have nothing to report for this meeting. [laughter]
Mr. Amico?
Through the chair, I wanted to thank Mrs. Dunn for all you've done with the Higgins Project. And I know you don't have anything to report, but you have in the past, and you've done an incredible job representing us and representing the city. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I've really enjoyed it. There is still more to come, but thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Change in school start times. Carry that over to the next meeting.
Yes.
The 2019-2020 school year working calendar. Any comments? Mrs. Dunn?
I would make a motion to approve this. If this is in the format to, if it is completed and ready to be approved, then I'll make a motion that we follow the recommendation of the superintendent and approve it.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Mr. Murtagh?
I just wanted to clarify. I was asked to look, and it does follow contractual obligations, starting the day after Labor Day in our contract. And this is a working draft, and it would be put into the format that we currently have this school year, but we just thought it was easier to read through as we were getting to the final product.
Mr. Hockman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you to Ms. Murtagh. Is this something that you're looking for a vote on? Is this prepared for approval?
Mm-hmm.
That's a yes?
Yes. That's a yes. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
I would like to add, I do appreciate this new format for us to use towards our discussion and for voting. It really was easier to look at it, to see where things fell and how it worked out. And I do know it will be presented in the usual format of just listing dates, times, but working from a calendar base, this was much easier to, just to visualize when things were going to take place. So, thank you.
Thank you for the feedback. I thought, yeah.
It was good.
Good. Thank you.
So, we have a motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Roll call?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to make a motion that we approve the resolution as the PBD School Committee. And I do have some things for discussion. So, I'd just like to make a motion that we do approve this.
Second.
Motion made by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. I'm recusing myself, just from this topic, for my employment with the legislature. Does anyone have any comments? Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, I do have one. In this resolution, which many school committees are signing on and in support of this, there is a budget figure, and it's listed as, in the very second to the last paragraph, that an updated foundation budget would bring the PBD Public Schools up to $2,608,465. There are many different formulas out there right now that are being considered for funding. And I honestly feel that we need to just adjust this so that it is not so specific. The reason being, I don't want people to anticipate that we might be getting $2,608,000. We don't know what we'll get. We actually, at this point, don't know what the legislature will decide on the foundation budget formula. But in the overall, the overall push behind signing on to this resolution is to stand in solidarity with all of the other school committees in the state, saying, yes, the state needs to look at the funding formula. They know that it's broken. They need to support increased state funding for the budgets. As I said, there are a lot of different things going on. I know there's a lot of different bills being proposed, different formulas being proposed. And I do think that standing with the other school committee in the state is very important. We all know that the state does need to provide more funding for education. It should be one of the top priorities because it is so vital to Massachusetts. Education is actually one of the biggest commodities of Massachusetts. So, I would just like to suggest some language, but I'll hold off until others have had a chance to speak on that, if anybody else would like to speak about, you know, specific language, or if people might want to leave the numbers in.
Mr. Amico?
Through the chair of the committee, I agree with Mrs. Dunn on that. There's no doubt that we're all in support of full funding. Well, I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I'm in full support of full funding our public schools. I do have an issue with that number, though, because I don't want to put us in a, back us in a corner. You know, with the different formulas out there, there might be more funding. So, I would be, I would be fine signing on and approving it, but I'm not so sure about that dollar figure, because if there are multiple formulas out there, we might be shortchanging ourselves here.
I agree.
Mr. Olimpio?
No, I agree with Mrs. Dunn. Maybe we could say maybe a significant amount, leave out an exact number, just, you know, if we were to receive a significant amount from the legislature, something to that effect. I don't know if anyone else has any suggestions.
Okay.
Mr. Amico?
Through the chair of the committee, and will the, in support of that, would it be okay that if we did that?
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Mrs. Dunn?
Actually, I'll be honest, the language I was going to suggest is, if you cross out up to 2.6 million in additional state aid, and if you substituted in increased funding in additional state aid, I think it would read well, gets the point across. We anticipate increased funding. We expect it. We want it. But we're not going to be held to a number. And I think that might help. But it doesn't change the, it doesn't change the thrust of the entire resolution.
All right. So, we have a motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio, to approve the resolution with those amendments.
With the amendment. So moved.
So, roll call?
Can I just, no, no, can I just get the amended language, the substituted language?
Mm-hmm. The amendment would be that the fourth, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph would read, whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring the PBD Public Schools increased funding in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move.
Roll call?
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
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 The PBD Public Schools, the Burke School, has received a $10,000 turnaround assistance grant to support us in our school-wide economically disadvantaged, that subgroup, to support our teachers in professional development as well as intervention. And we are very proud to have received this. So, again, for your approval and acknowledgement.
This is an action item?
Yes. Yes, I would.
Motion to receive the grant and with gratitude and send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Roll call.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. I'm waiting. I'm sorry. The PBD Public Schools, the Burke School, has received a $10,000 turnaround assistance grant to support us in our school-wide economically disadvantaged, that subgroup, to support our teachers in professional development as well as intervention. And we are very proud to have received this. So, again, for your approval and acknowledgement.
This is an action item?
Yes. Yes, I would.
Motion to receive the grant and with gratitude and send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Roll call.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
In your packet, you have the monthly expenditure report. If you have any questions, Mr. LaFleur is here this evening. And we also have the monthly hiring status report, and Mr. Farrell is here also, if you have any questions at this time. We also have some, two field trips. DECA is going to the States at the Copley Plaza, and we just heard from a student downstairs. She is so excited. So, with your approval, it's at the Copley Plaza in Boston, March 7 through 9, for your acceptance and approval.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to accept and approve the field trip for DECA to the Copley Place of Boston on January 11. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Roll call.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes. In your packet, you have the monthly expenditure report. If you have any questions, Mr. LaFleur is here this evening. And we also have the monthly hiring status report, and Mr. Farrell is here also, if you have any questions at this time. We also have some, two field trips. DECA is going to the States at the Copley Plaza, and we just heard from a student downstairs. She is so excited. So, with your approval, it's at the Copley Plaza in Boston, March 7 through 9, for your acceptance and approval.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to accept and approve the field trip for DECA to the Copley Place of Boston on January 11. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Roll call.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes. Also, from the States, they do the DECA International, and they would go to Orlando, Florida, April 26 to May 1.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Motion to accept and approve the field trip, the out-of-state field trip for DECA for May 1 to Orlando, Florida. So moved.
Just, Mrs. Dunn? That would be April 26 through May 1?
Yes. Thank you. Adjust the dates accordingly. [laughter] Thank you, Mrs. Dunn.
So, motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olimpio. Roll call.
It didn't seem like a short trip to Florida. [laughter]
Okay.
Yes.
And wish them well.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And please wish them well. The DECA students do so many things at those conventions and conferences. It's amazing what they learn, really.
They do, and they're so excited. So, I most certainly will send that along to them. So, there's two more things that I'd like to put under the superintendent's report. I've been meaning to bring this forward, and I would like to, with your approval, with our growing programs and growing populations, for educational planning, to provide support and expertise, and I would house this position, I would like to hire another board-certified behavioral analyst, which is, you hear the acronym of BCBA. I would house this BCBA at the Brown School, but I cannot do that without your approval. So, I'm bringing that forth tonight, their expertise for support with programming and, but that expertise would also be for the district as well. We have two currently. I would like to add an addition, add a third, to support our programs and to support our schools and our teachers and our administrators and students.
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Superintendent, for bringing this to us. This is a thoughtful response to some issues that are going on in the district, and, in my opinion, an appropriate response. When I first got here 10 years ago, we had one, believe it or not, one BCBA in this district, and it was woefully inadequate. And we peaked at three BCBAs at one point, and due to population shifts and budgetary constraints, and I think a voluntary retirement or maternity issue, we lost a BCBA, didn't fill that position. And I know Mrs. Dunn often says, things we don't fill on the budget, we lose. So, thank you for bringing this back to us. If you didn't bring it back to us now, we would be talking about it in budget sessions because it's necessary. We have a significant enough population to have three FTEs, three FTEs and BCBAs. It's a position that, as you said, will help support staff members, teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, students. And that's what our focus is here and continues to be, so thank you for doing this.
Mr. Olimpio?
Ms. Murtagh, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I really appreciate the support. Thank you to the fellow, you know, committee members. I feel like we're all on the same page when it comes to this stuff, and really proud to be part of this group and working with, you know, the administration on this. Thank you.
Mr. Amico?
Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh, thank you for bringing this forward. PBD is a large district. We have six, over 6,000 students, and this city is growing. People want to move here. We'll be having younger families moving here, and we're going to need more of this down the road, and this is a great start. And for a district this size, it's so well-needed. So, thank you for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you. Superintendent Murtagh, thank you, because we know you're keeping us apprised of situations that change during the year, and this is a very necessary position. Could you give us an idea budgetarily, what the salary range for something like this would be?
Well, for full year, it's between 65 and 70, with more than a master's, and it's very specialized. For half-year, obviously, it'll be half of that, but this would be something I would be putting forth to you in the upcoming budgetary sessions as well.
Oh, okay. So, you'll be looking for someone now, although?
Correct.
Okay.
With your approval tonight, I would push forward now.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Amico, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call.
Mr. Hockman?
Yes.
Mr. Olimpio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
And the final thing, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have two more things, of course. The next thing is, is I just want to make an announcement that Dr. Lourd and our whole team at Central Office and the administrators and teachers, we're very excited to, next week, we go live with our new Aspen Student Management System. I will be sending home notifications tomorrow, putting things on the website, and we will guide you through this, but please be patient with us as, but we're very, very excited about this new management system and for efficiencies and effectiveness, and super excited about it. So, stay tuned and check your students' backpack or email, and check your email. And the last thing is, this weekend storm was a tough one. It was tricky. And I want to thank maintenance, the maintenance department, the custodians, the DPW, the school committee for their support, and the parents, teachers, and administration for their patience and cooperation. You were with me all the way. It was a tough call. It's not easy living in New England, and it was icy today. So, thank you for your support, and I do appreciate all the hard work of everybody that was involved. So, thank you.
Mrs. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question through you too, Superintendent Murtagh. This was a question that was posed to me today, and I said that if I had the chance, I would bring it up tonight at the meeting. Otherwise, I would bring it up to you after the meeting and ask for an answer.
Sure.
One of the things that parents were wondering, when we have the, we have the Connected Ed service, and they were wondering if we could look into, when a bus can't make it to a bus stop, is it possible to contact people that are at that stop when we know that they won't be picked up? It doesn't happen very often. I know it happened a couple times today, only because people may have left before the bus got there, because the bus took a while, or because of the conditions. And seriously, we live in New England. Timing is everything, and this storm was difficult to deal with, just at your own home, never mind on a citywide scale. But it sounded like it was actually a good question, because we do have a system, I think that personally, just knowing a little bit about it, that the logistics might be very difficult, but I don't know. But I said I'd bring it up, and perhaps you could look into that.
Thank you. I most certainly would. There's two things. There's something in Connected Ed that I will look into, but also in Aspen, I think there's something that we can do. We can make groups up of students that take buses. And today, with the buses, there were a few stops that did take longer than usual, but they had a very good plan in place, but I thank everybody for their patience. But that's something that I will look into for, in Blackboard Connect, which is called Connected Ed, and also, we will look at that through Aspen. So, I will bring back that information next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it may never happen again. Knock on wood. Keep our fingers crossed.
However, it's just a good plan to have in place.
Yeah. It actually, it seemed very sensible, and it would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Written communications. Is there any?
Look for it.
Move on to subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting at 5:30 tonight for the Education Subcommittee, and we were updated on the programs that will be available at the Planetarium at PBD Veterans Memorial High School, geared around sixth-grade students, looking, they're looking to pilot, to have five or six of our sixth-grade classes go to the Planetarium, to be introduced to the phases of the moon and some other items that they're studying in their regular curriculum at the Planetarium, as well as, Ms. Murtagh introduced something new to that tonight, as well as take a brief tour of PBD High School and get introduced to that building, if they aren't already familiar with it, at sixth grade rather than at eighth grade. So, we're looking forward to having that rolled out in the near future and getting some feedback on that, and hopefully expanding it in the future. The other item we talked about at our meeting tonight was Aspen, which Ms. Murtagh has already addressed, unless she wants to add anything to it. And then, our next meeting will be at 5:30 PM on February, February 26 here at the Higgins.
Is there anything to add?
At the end, I'll break something.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee. Is there anything new on that? School Safety Subcommittee?
Nothing new to report.
Athletics and Wellness?
No.
Nothing new to report. Okay. Quality and Standards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quality and Standards Subcommittee met this evening, prior to this school committee meeting at 6 o'clock. And what we did was, we went through Section B of the policy manual, which is the school committee bylaws, and we've targeted, right off the bat, a few, few of the policies that we need to adjust, and we will come back to you with the appropriate language for those, for a first reading and then a second reading. We'll probably have more than what we did tonight. The members were charged with going, going back, looking through, and finding any of the ones they'd like to adjust.
We expect it, we want it, but we're not going to be held to a number, and I think that might help, but it doesn't change the, it doesn't change the thrust of the entire resolution.
All right. So, we have a motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia, to approve the resolution with those amendments.
With the amendment. So moved.
Roll call.
Can I just, no, no, can I just get the amended language, the substituted language?
The amendment would be that the fourth, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph would read, whereas an updated foundation budget formula would bring the PBD Public Schools increased funding in additional state aid each year, allowing this district to move.
Roll call.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
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 Public participation. If anyone would like to participate, feel free to come up. Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Arneus. The first is, we have yet another generous donation from New York Life via Mr. Collins for $500 for your approval.
Motion to accept the donation from New York Life through Dan Collins, and I think at this point, if we can, since he appreciated the publicity that he got at the last meeting, maybe we can name the next Higgins School Dance, school-wide dance, the Dan Higgins.
I'm sure he'd be thrilled with that.
Motion to approve with gratitude and send a letter of effect.
Second.
All right, roll call.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
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 Oh, sorry, I'm waiting, I'm, sorry. The PBD Public Schools, the Burke School, has received a $10,000 turnaround assistance grant to support us in our school-wide economically disadvantaged, that subgroup, to support our teachers in professional development as well as intervention, and we are very proud to have received this. So, again, for your approval and acknowledgement.
This is an action item?
Yes, yes, I would.
Motion to receive the grant and with gratitude and send a letter of thanks.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hoffman, seconded by Mr. Olympia, roll call.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Arneak?
Yes.
Ms. Dunn?
Yes.
In your packet, you have the monthly expenditure report. If you have any questions, Mr. LaFleur is here this evening. And we also have the monthly hiring status report, and Mr. Farrell is here also, if you have any questions. At this time. We also have some, two field trips. DECA is going to the States at the Copley Plaza, and we just heard from a student downstairs, she is so excited. So, with your approval, it's at the Copley Plaza in Boston, March 7th through 9th, for your acceptance and approval.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Motion to accept and approve the field trip for DECA to the Copley Place of Boston on January 11th. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia, roll call.
Just for the vote, it's March 7th.
March 7th tonight. Oh, I'm sorry, I was reading the date. Okay, March 7th.
Mr. Hoffman?
Abstain.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
You can, you can step down, I think, in this, um, here.
Can I do that?
Yep. Right, right, you could just.
Right down.
So, I mean, yes, vote on that.
Okay. Also, from the States, they do the DECA International, and they would go to Orlando, Florida, April 26th to May 1st.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. Motion to accept and approve the field trip, the out-of-state field trip for DECA for May 1st to Orlando, Florida.
Second.
Just, Ms. Dunn, that would be April 26th through May 1st?
Yes, thank you. Adjust the dates accordingly. Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
So, motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia.
Didn't seem like a short trip to Florida.
Okay.
Yes.
And wish them well.
Yes.
Mr. Arneak?
Yes.
Yes, and please wish them well. The DECA students do so many things at those conventions and conferences. It's amazing what they learn, really.
They do, and they're so excited, so I most certainly will send that along to them. So, there's two more things that I'd like to put under the superintendent's report. I've been meaning to bring this forward, and I would like to, with your approval, with our growing programs and growing populations, for educational planning, to provide support and expertise, and I would house this position, I would like to hire a new, another board certified behavioral analyst, which is, you hear the acronym of BCBA. I would house this BCBA at the Brown School, but I cannot do that without your approval. So, I'm bringing that forth tonight, their expertise for support with programming and, but that expertise would also be for the district as well. We have two currently, I would like to add an addition, add a third, to support our programs and to support our schools and our teachers and our administrators and students.
I'd like to make a motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Superintendent, for bringing this to us. This is a thoughtful response to some issues that are going on in the district, and I, in my opinion, appropriate response. When I first got here 10 years ago, we had one, believe it or not, one BCBA in this district, and it was woefully inadequate. And we peaked at three BCBA's at one point, and due to population shifts and budgetary constraints, and I think a voluntary retirement or maternity issue, we lost a BCBA, didn't fill that position, and I know Ms. Dunn often says, things we don't fill on the budget, we lose. So, thank you for bringing this back to us. If you didn't bring it back to us now, we would be talking about it in budget sessions because it's necessary. We have a significant enough population to have three FTEs, three FTEs and BCBA's. It's a position that, as you said, will help support staff members, teachers, paraprofessionals, administrators, students, and that's what our focus is here and continues to be, so thank you for doing this.
Mr. Olympia?
Ms. Murtagh, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention. I really appreciate the support. Thank you to the fellow, you know, committee members. I feel like we're all on the same page when it comes to this stuff, and really proud to be part of this group and working with, you know, the administration on this.
Thank you.
Mr. Miko?
Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh, thank you for bringing this forward. PBD is a large district. We have six, over 6,000 students, and this city is growing. People want to move here. We'll be having younger families moving here, and we're going to need more of this down the road, and this is a great start. And for a district this size, it's so well-needed, so thank you for bringing this forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your support.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you. Superintendent Murtagh, thank you, because we know you're keeping us apprised of situations that change during the year, and this is a very necessary position. Could you give us an idea budgetarily what the salary range for something like this would be?
Well, for full year, it's between 65 and 70 with more than a master's, and it's very specialized. For half-year, obviously, we halve that, but this would be something I would be putting forth to you in the upcoming budgetary sessions as well.
Oh, okay, so you'll be looking for someone now, although?
Correct.
Okay.
With your approval tonight, I would push forward now.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Miko, seconded by Mr. Hoffman. Roll call.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Arneak?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you.
And the final thing, oh, actually, I'm sorry, I have two more things, of course. The next thing is, is I just want to make an announcement that Dr. Lourd and our whole team at Central Office and the administrators and teachers, we're very excited to, next week, we go live with our new Aspen Student Management System. I will be sending home notifications tomorrow, putting things on the website, and we will guide you through this, but please be patient with us as, but we're very, very excited about this new management system and for efficiencies and effectiveness, and super excited about it. So, stay tuned and check your students' backpack or email, and check your email. And the last thing is, this weekend storm was a tough one. It was tricky, and I want to thank maintenance, the maintenance department, the custodians, the DPW, school committee for their support, and the parents, teachers, and administration for their patience and cooperation. You were with me all the way. It was a tough call, it's not easy living in New England, and it was icy today, so thank you for your support, and I do appreciate all the hard work of everybody that was involved, so thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a question through you to Superintendent Murtagh. This was a question that was posed to me today, and I said that if I had the chance, I would bring it up tonight at the meeting, otherwise, I would bring it up to you after the meeting and ask for an answer.
Sure.
One of the things that parents were wondering, when we have the, we have the Connected Ed service, and they were wondering if we could look into, when a bus can't make it to a bus stop, is it possible to contact people that are at that stop when we know that they won't be picked up? It doesn't happen very often. I know it happened a couple times today, only because people may have left before the bus got there, because the bus took a while, or because of the conditions, and seriously, we live in New England, timing is everything, and this storm was difficult to deal with, just at your own home, never mind on a citywide scale. But it sounded like it was actually a good question, because we do have a system, I think that personally, just knowing a little bit about it, that the logistics might be very difficult, but I don't know. But I said I'd bring it up, and perhaps you could look into that.
Thank you, I most certainly would. There's two things. There's something in Connected Ed that I will look into, but also in Aspen, I think there's something that we can do. We can make groups up of students that take buses, and today, with the buses, there were a few stops that did take longer than usual, but they had a very good plan in place, but I thank everybody for their patience. But that's something that I will look into for, in Blackboard Connect, which is called Connect Ed, and also, we will look at that through Aspen. So, I will bring back that information next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And it may never happen again. Knock on wood. Keep our fingers crossed.
However, it's just a good plan to have in place.
Yeah, it actually, it seemed very sensible, and it would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Written communications. I believe there are any. Move on to subcommittee reports. Education Subcommittee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting at 5:30 tonight for the Education Subcommittee, and we were updated on the programs that'll be available at the Planetarium at PBD Veterans Memorial High School geared around 6th grade students, looking, they're looking to pilot, to have five or six of our 6th grade classes go to the Planetarium, to be introduced to the phases of the moon and some other items that they're studying in their regular curriculum at the Planetarium, as well as, Ms. Murtagh introduced something new to that tonight, as well as take a brief tour of PBD High School and get introduced to that building if they aren't already familiar with it, at 6th grade rather than at 8th grade. So, we're looking forward to having that rolled out in the near future and getting some feedback on that, and hopefully expanding it in the future. The other item we talked about at our meeting tonight was Aspen, which Ms. Murtagh has already addressed, unless she wants to add anything to it. And then, our next meeting will be the, at 5:30 PM on February, February 26th here at the Higgins.
At the end, I'll break something.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Finance Subcommittee, I believe there's anything you want to end. School Safety Subcommittee?
Nothing new to report.
Athletics and Wellness?
Nothing.
Nothing new to report, okay. Quality and Standards?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Quality and Standards Subcommittee met this evening prior to this school committee meeting at 6 o'clock, and what we did was, we went through Section B of the policy manual, which is the school committee bylaws, and we've targeted right off the bat, a few, few of the policies that we need to adjust, and we will come back to you with the appropriate language for those, for a first reading and then a second reading. We'll probably have more than what we did tonight. The members were charged with going, going back, looking through, and finding any of the ones they'd like to adjust. But we looked at Policy BDE, which is subcommittees of the school committee, that needs to be updated. We looked at BED, which is meeting procedures, that needs to be updated as far as location of our meeting. We looked at Policy BEDB, which concerns agendas, and discovered that there are two pages, they're very similar. If you go through the packet, it's basically Page 33 and 34, and it was the recommendation of the Subcommittee that Page 34 be deleted and that we concentrate on Page 33. This would not take a first or second reading to just delete that, because it's basically redundant, so I would like to make a motion, at the end of my presentation, I'll make a motion that we delete Page 34. And then, file BEDH, which is public participation at school committee meetings. We looked at that, and there are several adjustments that need to be made to that policy. So, we're going to go through all of Section B. I encourage anyone who has any suggestions or any other things that they'd like us to look at in there, please feel free to email me, and I'll make sure that the Subcommittee members receive that. But be assured, we are going through all of this. We also want to make sure that some of the boilerplate policies that are in here conform with the ones from MASC, and we'll be able to give you that information at the next meeting. So, at this time, I would like to make a motion that file BEDB on Page 34 of the bylaws be removed.
Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Discussion on that?
Just give us a second.
Okay. And then, I just, we just have to vote on that one.
Roll call.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes. Thank you. And I will schedule our next Subcommittee meeting on this, probably prior to our next school committee meeting. I always try to give Mrs. Macarelli some time to be able to schedule all those Subcommittee meetings and the meetings prior to the meeting, so I will get back to you on the time for that one. Thank you.
Liaison to City Council and Advisory Boards.
There will be a parent advisory board meeting on Monday, January 28th, here at the Higgins at 6:30. Right now, the topic is snow removal. Finally waited till the snow fell before we decided to talk about it, but it should be a good meeting. It's always informative.
Building and Grounds, Mr. Miko?
Thank you, through the chair to the committee. I'm looking at setting up a meeting either on February 12th or the 26th. I'll be in touch with Ms. Murtagh's office and the mayor's office as well.
Mr. Olympia, Special Education Parent Advisory Board?
Yes, we are meeting January 30th, Wednesday, 6:00, 6:00 PM at the Higgins, and also, by popular demand, we are also having another meeting the morning, Friday, Friday morning at 9:15, February 8th, and it's at Breaking Ground Cafe on 67 Main Street in PBD. Good way to help the local business, and really, a lot of parents reached out to me that they have a hard time making the meetings at night, so I offered that I would meet on a morning, and we picked Friday, February 8th at 9:15, and I would expect some good attendance at that meeting, so.
Thank you. New business. Ms. Dunn? MASC update?
Well, thank you. I will tell you, there was going to be a nice presentation on the screen if I had been able to get technologically advanced enough to download it, and I will have to bring it in at a different time. It is, and we may have a second one by the time I bring it in. MASC, as I told you before, is updating everything for the website, all of the materials that they put out, and as part of this, the first presentation that they have prepared is about an eight-minute video on the MASC conference, what it means to members, what it's taught them, and it's very, very well-done. It was done professionally, and I think you'll enjoy it. I had to wait for it to be released to the public, and then I couldn't download it today, and I'm so sorry, because it's very well-done.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Ms. Murtagh?
I have two more things. I think of them as I go, I'm sorry, I'm trying to end the meeting, but I'm sorry. I just wanted to bring up, on January 31st, we're having our school committee professional development. It will be at the PBD Learning Academy at 6:00 PM. That will be posted by Mrs. Macarelli as well. And the other thing I wanted to bring up, to see if it would be okay with you, the second meeting in February, I would like the principals to come in. Well, I'll probably do eight elementaries, and then maybe pick a different night for the middle school, high school, and maybe other accountable units that want to come forth with the budgetary considerations. We talked about our school improvement plans being in the fall of this, you know, fall of 2019, but the budgetary considerations you said that you wanted me to bring forth, so I'm thinking the last meeting in February to start them.
26th.
The 26th, if possible, for Mr. LaFleur and I to be able to get you your budget book in a timely manner. I figured you wanted to hear that before everything starts with the budget.
Through the chair, Ms. Murtagh, how many schools do you want to come in that day?
I think we could do, at the elementary level, I think we could do all eight in one night, like, it would be quick, so we could probably start at 5:30, 5:30, quarter or 6, and move them along.
Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Not to take anyone's voice away at that meeting, because I think each principal is important and is entitled to certainly talk to us, but in my experience, the budgetary requests seem to be redundant in part and unique in part. Perhaps in order to facilitate that conversation and consolidate it to some degree, we could have those redundant requests, you know, done at one time by maybe someone that they select, the principal selects to present, and then each school with their unique requests can then take off from there.
Sure thing, that's a good idea. And then, the middle school and high school, it could be another, you know, session.
Through the chair to Ms. Murtagh and the committee, I do agree with Mr. Hoffman, because when we do those budgetary considerations, when we do have the redundancy, that usually gives us the light to say, hey, you know, that's something we really need. So, if we have that from all of the schools, then that makes us, or makes our decision a little bit easier come budget time, so I do agree with Mr. Hoffman. Thank you.
Great, good idea, thank you. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
To start that process?
Definitely.
And then, we'll follow up with middle school and high school, and...
We just voted on the bylaws that say you set the agenda.
Which I do, but I just wanted to make sure everybody was ready to go with that.
Sounds like someone else we had around here before.
Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you all for a great meeting.
Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Just very quickly, everyone in PBD has been invited, parents especially, have been invited to attend a presentation tomorrow night at the Essex North Shore Agricultural Technical School. It's a presentation called If Only They'd Known, and it's by a family, local family, who lost his son to drugs and alcohol. It's not a presentation about addiction or overdoses or anything like that, it's about something that many students do not realize, about taking drugs and drinking at the same time. And the parents came up with this presentation, and it's very, very well-recommended, and because we are members of the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical District, anyone in PBD has been invited to attend that tomorrow night. I believe it's at 6:00 PM in the gym, or the fieldhouse at the, at the school.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Items for next agenda will be handled in regular course of business. We have a motion to adjourn from anyone?